I will call the Pauline County Board of Commissioners April 23rd work session in order, thank you all for being here, recognize elected officials to be Sheriff Gary Gellidge and City Councilman Jimmy, good to have you, Jimmy Hinson, and anybody else I missed? All right, well, everybody's special here. Brian, if you had to bring forth the list of people who wish to speak. And also ask Pastor Tommy McBrus from Shallow Mission Baptist Church to come to the podium and lead us in our education, and also in our place to collect statements.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. We greet you in the name of our Lord, our Father, and our God again, we come before you. We thank you, Lord God, for the blessings we enjoy day by day through your grace and your mercy. As we come now, Lord God, we ask you for guidance, spiritual wisdom to do those things that are pleasing and that make sense, Lord God, to bless the citizens of Pauline County. We lift up this board, Lord God, we lift up this great nation, we lift up all of our public officials, asking you, Lord God, to walk with them and talk with them, so they may do the job that they was elected to do. We will also give you the praise, glory, and honor. We ask this all in the wonderful name of the Savior we pray. Amen. Let us pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor McBrus. He said he's still wearing his Easter attire, and not only on his back, but in his heart for sure. Thank you for being here. The April 9th, 2019 work session minutes and the April 9th, 2019 board meeting minutes, and the April 12th, 2019 special call meeting minutes are available for review. Under announcements this morning, we had five of our staff, Chief Trevor Hess, Steve Goss, Alene Culerson, who's the Animal Control Director, there she is, and Austin Haygood and Steve Grimsley, all went to the Capitol, I'm sorry, they went to the Governor's mansion, and participated in a little adoption effort, so just watch that.
Hey, Pauline County, it's Alene from Animal Control.
And Chief Ash from the Pauline County Marshal Bureau.
We are coming to you today from the mansion here at the Governor's. You can see, I can see around us, but we are here adopting out animals. We've got nine dogs here with us today, and four cats and two kittens, and we're hoping they all get out here and finally get home today. We already had our first adoption, and that was Sandy, after being a veteran of the military. We're so happy that we could make it today.
Having a great time, love being here, this is a great event, glad to be representing for Pauline County.
Good morning, Count here, so glad to be with Pauline County today, we spend adoption day. It's a great day to get taken home, we have a lot of adoptions today, we're very excited. They had the first adoption today, so we're very, very proud of them.
Awesome, those dogs, they were very healthy, didn't they? Next, under the announcements, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Ron Davis to lift up something that's going to occur, Ms. Brannan.
Thanks Dave. There's an organization in Pauline County called Alternative Baseball. It's an organization started by a young man with autism who wanted to provide a place for folks on the spectrum and with other special needs to be able to play ball and be accepted as they are and be encouraged in their efforts on the field. And they have an organization that's based here in Pauline, but it actually reaches international now and across many states, and there are teams that compete. And I say compete, these fellows come out, they play hard. On Friday night at 7:00 at the New Georgia Ballpark, that's on Highway 61, just North Ridge Road, they're having the Pauline Celebrity Classic, and this is a game that one of their All-Star teams is playing, some folks from around the county that they call celebrities. I don't know, Dave and I played last year, I don't know, celebrity might be a stretch, but there's some folks around the county that they're going to be playing against a team from this organization. And we went last year, I was telling Sandy before this, I was going and I expected, you know, fun game, you know, have a good time, you know, showed up, warming up a little bit, and those boys came to play. And we got a big lead on them and they just kept chipping away at us and actually came back and beat us in the last inning, and certain state representatives struck out to end the game, I won't embarrass Martin and one of everybody. I mean, winning runs on base and he struck out, doesn't that? But anyway, if you have a chance on Friday night at 7:00, go check out that game and meet the folks with that organization, it'll be a good time. And the Commissioners won't be able to be part of it, we will be in Savannah with our annual A C C G conference and training. This weekend, we have a schedule conflict, but I know there's some folks from around the county, different departments are going to be participating there, so go check them out. 7:00, New Georgia Ballpark on Friday, April 26.
Thank you, Ron, very much. We got Ms. Mona Shorter here, so glad to have you here, Mona, with the United States Census Bureau regarding the 2020 census coming up, so right around the corner, because it's really all already on us.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Mona Shorter, like I said, I am a recruiting assistant with the U S Census Bureau, and I'm just here today to bring awareness that the census is around, 2020, and right now we're laying the foundation to get people activated, and we're here, and how important the surveys are to return starting January 2020. You know, we bring awareness because of the census survey allows the county, the community to know the social, the demographic conditions that we're in, and also allocates the, I'm sorry, it also allows the allocation of federal funding. So that's our main purpose, is to get people to apply, to get people aware on what the census is all about. Just if you have time, anybody, if you have time, go to our website, 2020census.gov to learn more about the census and why it's important, why this survey's important to return, and the allocated amount of time, and also we have people coming out, once those forms are not submitted back, we will have them coming out in 2020. The cutoff date is going to be September 2020 to have those surveys in. Do you have any questions for me?
Couple of specifics on having an accurate census and how that will help out our community is either financially or...
Yes, the federal fund, that's how they're allocated for our different demographics in your area. They help our childcare, our healthcare, and also we determine the seats for the House of Representatives. And also to bring awareness to the jobs that we have, that we have available in the area. You can go to 2020census.gov/jobs to see what we have available to help out the community.
Any other questions for Ms. Shorter? I parked it to drive to get out here, Pauline County.
I parked it.
Then give us the time and give us that report and come back.
Thanks for having me.
The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Safe Digging Proclamation of Michael Creighton with Greystone Power and Joe Ordway with AT&amp;T, and George May want to have a little more about the Safe Digging Proclamation. Thank you for bringing us support, Michael. And just while y'all are getting up here, I'm going to go in and read this and get that part of it out of the way. It's, "Safe digging month, whereas thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threat to public safety. And whereas in 2005, the S C C, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors, I'm sorry, designated 811, to provide contractors and homeowners, a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site. And whereas the Pauline County Utility Coordinating Committee, a stakeholder, a driven organization dedicated to prevention of damage to underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the national 811 notification system in an effort to reduce these dangers. And whereas damage prevention is a shared responsibility by using safe digging practices, that the contractors and homeowners of Pauline County in Georgia can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected. And now therefore, I hereby proclaim on behalf of Pauline County, the month, April 2019, as Safe Digging Month, encourage contractors and homeowners throughout Pauline County to call 811 before digging. Safe digging is no accident."
Kathy, do you want to say anything?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, how is everybody? Yeah, I'm tall, sorry.
Good, how are you?
Good, how is everybody? I'm just part of the Pauline U C C, I'm not, Michael Creighton is our president, and then Joe Ordway is our vice president. So we did work to try to make a proclamation, it's an initiative by the Georgia 811, to be able to allow some funding for our monthly U C C meeting. So we wanted to promote, you know, the 811 initiative for all the contractors to be able to, so that the citizens understand that you need to call before you dig, it's very important, so that we don't have any issues, any hits, or any damages out there. So we just wanted to bring that before the board and let everybody know what's going on in the county.
Thank you so much. I didn't see that, took that around, so we used to... Pretty good with that. Brother, a less U C C.
Thank y'all for sharing that, hope that you can go out and get all the airwaves too.
On behalf of the Pauline U C C, I can speak, on behalf of everybody, we'd really like to thank y'all for recognizing it and for making April Safe Digging Month a proclamation. Very important to this. Me and Joe may have the titles, but it is a joint effort, there's so many hands in it that make this a success.
Well, it's very, very important.
Appreciate y'all recognizing that.
Yeah.
Can you get a note? Yes. Very good.
If I could have the background, it shifts.
Scottface Utilities.
And our last announcement is, the Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Breakfast Award to firefighter Casey Dearman with the Pauline County Fire Department. Chief Pauline Kelsey is going to help with this one. This award presented to Casey Dearman in recognition of outstanding service to this community within our Pauline County Board of Commissioners. 23rd day of April 2019, for all of us.
Good morning Commissioners and Board. It's my pleasure to introduce you to firefighter Casey Dearman. Casey joined our department in 2016, he attended our Ricky class, or the Drew class, and was very successful with that, and he's excelled with that. And once he received his certification, he was placed in a fire station to work to continue his career path to be an asset to the department, and that is just not overstated. He has been a true asset to the department. He's taken many classes, they have to have classes for their career paths within the department, but we've looked back and some of the guys checked, and he's taken over 30 classes since 2016. I believe I can tell you a little bit about his dedication and what it means to us, and apparently what it means to him to be able to advance his career. He's taken all these classes, and some of the ones he's taken, he's taken actually some of the classes that he didn't even need to take, I mean, he wants to just improve himself and advance himself in his career. He's taken some technical rescue classes, swimwater classes, rope technician, these are all advanced classes, this is for advanced responses. He's also attended several fire conferences in the state of Georgia and Alabama on his own, so he has a great need for advancement. Casey's currently signed up as a Fire Apparatus Operator Certification Class, and he's also been accepted in our First Emergency Medical Technician Class. Firefighter Dearman works with a very enthusiastic attitude, and this attitude is not only noticed within the department, but other instructors as well throughout the state. We receive emails and calls stating what a great man he is, and a great student, how he participates in the class. Casey, after he got out of recruit class, he went on his own and realized that once you come out of recruit class, it's hard for employees to know how to get used to station line. It's different, you try to prepare them in these recruit classes, but they're really not able to understand what they need to do. So Casey went on his own and he presents to the newly class, now he comes and presents a class to them to explain what it's like for station line, and that's very important. And we've incorporated that in all our recruit classes since he's done that. Casey's also a certified self-contained breathing apparatus technician. He can be seen every shift repairing and maintaining our S E B As, which is our most vital piece of safety equipment for our personnel as they operate in hazardous atmospheres. This is also a class that he volunteered to take. You have to go through a class, it's certified by the company, and it's, like I said, it's very important for these guys to have working equipment out in these atmospheres, and he volunteered to do that as well. I don't see Casey much out in the field, when they leave, I don't see him much, but I do ask about employees a lot, and when I ask about Casey, they brighten up and say that Casey's one of the good ones, and we're so happy to have him, he's dedicated, and they have nothing but great things to say about him. He's a true example of dedicated and enthusiastic firefighter, and he's very early in his career, and I see nothing but great things happening for Casey. His work ethic sets great examples for others in the career service, and I'm just so proud of him. When he came in, I liked it, he's got an infectious smile, like he's got right now on his face, and we're just so proud to have him, and if I had about 25 more of him, I'd be one of the happiest fire chiefs around. But Casey, thank you so much for everything you did in Pauline County.
Don't let your colored steelies enjoy it.
We have no invited guests this morning, in better words, we have none. Portion committees and departments, we're very glad to have this Amy Tissincheck here from CPS Conference of Program Services to give us an update on jails. We get a little bit different look and face and presentation this morning, Amy, thanks for coming.
Thank you Chairman and Commissioners. One of the biggest things I want to say today is we have good weather finally. I think that's been kind of a change from what you've heard over the last several months with the jail update, it's really been weather, weather, weather impacts, you know, for the project for the last several months, and I think we are finally at a point now where we're kind of, we're in good shape. The building is, as you can tell, is almost dried in, so it is, we're in good shape. So as you can see, when you, if you go on the jail website, it's paulinejail.com, you'll be able to take a look at the job site camera that's been installed, and you'll see great progress on the outside, on top of a little bit more in depth on the progress of the project. But in case any of you don't know, the website is up and running, you can find out more details on the project itself, and also there's a job site camera that you can kind of track the progress over time. Budget update, we have not changed since the last update last month. Change Order Number Two, which incorporated the rock, was incorporated at that time of the last update. Construction contingency, where we are, it's just over 655,000, and then the owner's contingency has not changed, and that was $250,000. Cost impacts that we're tracking right now, one of the biggest, kind of the unknowns, was the remediation of subsurface conditions at the visitor's center. We've done a lot of test pits and a lot of investigation on the original proposed site of the visitor's center that came back, where there was a lot of organic material, which made us kind of step back, take a look at another resolution. So what we've come up with is actually moving that visitor's center about 250 feet to the west. We've done test pits in that location, and the organics is significantly less, so we are, we're looking into further detail on that, and I believe that's going to be the ultimate solution. It'll be a lot less costly for you all, and then also it won't change any operational items for the sheriff's office. Excess soils that we have, we are still working through that, but the ultimate decision was to keep as much soil on-site as we can. There's really no need to haul it off-site because it's a lot more expensive if we do that. And then the third item is the high-speed bi-fold door. We have released the construction team to go ahead with shop drawings and the initial documentation that's needed for these doors, but the sheriff's office is, this is a very needed item for the sheriff's office, that we really need to work towards getting this as a budget. All right, progress, C M U masonry, that's the biggest bulk of the work right now in the detention side, so in the housing area and the support area, if you were to go in there at this point, you'll see a lot of blockwork, and that's going to continue through June. That's what all the interior walls are, the interior walls are fully grounded, masonry walls, so it's a lot, lot of work that will be continuing. Roofing at the law enforcement center is nearing completion. Sliders and the mezzanines have been installed and will continue to be installed in the dayrooms. Overhead electric hole in the housing area is complete, and ductwork continues to be Couple update progress photos, so I think at the last update, you saw some of the steel cells that were installed. What's going on now in the dayrooms is that the sliders, which are the doors, have been installed, the mezzanines and the stairways are working to be installed, so those dayrooms now are really starting to kind of come to life, if you will, and that'll progress over the next several months, getting those final installation completed. Here's another photo of what the sliders look like, and then also the inside of the dayroom cells. They've gotten all of the lighting installed, and they've gotten all of the hookups, plumbing hookups on the backside installed. And then at the law enforcement center, fireproofing and metal stick construction has started. The law enforcement center is really where you're going to see a lot of the more, I guess, conventional, more office-type construction, so it's a lot of stud walls, so over the next couple of months, you'll really see that portion of the facility come to life. And then schedule updates, there has not been any updates to the overall dates since the last meeting, but again, the interior masonry, looking at completing that in June. Law enforcement center is going to finish up right after that in July, still looking at a January 27 substantial completion date, and then March final completion. All right? Any questions? I just want to let everybody know, we are looking at having a drying-in party, it's probably going to be later next month, that will give you the opportunity to come in and take a look around and see the progress for yourself. We'll also invite, you know, the public to come in as well, so that'll give them the opportunity to take a peek inside and see what's going on on the inside.
That's a chance to get in jail without being actually put...
Exactly, yes, that's definitely the time you want to be in there.
Amy, you mentioned the subsurface conditions in a range there from 50 to 100, but what would cause it to be right or left there?
The amount of organic soils. So the original location that we were looking at had anywhere from 6 to 13 feet of organic materials right under where the foundation was to be. Moving that to the west actually got us out of a good portion of that, so we're feeling right now we're probably going to be around 65 by moving that over, but the range is due to the amount of organic material that needs to be hauled off.
Any other questions? Thanks again for the report.
Thank you.
We have no one that's signed up for participation in the agenda items, the consent agenda has five of five items required to read those. Number one is declare the attached listed items that surplus and approve their disposal through officer trade. In the back, we do have a video. That was my understanding, we were going to have a picture or a video, these items. While police is checking, I'll go in and read the others. Number two is going to be in the Pauline County Board of Commissioners, regular, to amend the Pauline County Board of Commissioners, regular meetings given over 10, Tuesday, June 11, 2019, meetings at 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., to Thursday, June 13, 2019, at the same time, 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., due to training that's required. Number three is to appoint Alene M Fitzgerald to fill the unexpired term of Michael Sudan on the planning and zoning commission with a term ending December 31, 2019. Number four is to approve and authorize the chairman to execute the undergovernment agreement with the city of Dallas for Pauline County to conduct a municipal election for the city of Dallas. Number five is to approve the no-cost change, the no-cost change order, number two, to the contract with Mid-South Builders Incorporated for the State Route 92 South Water Main relocation. So for those interested, the list of surplus items are available, are available in the back. So go to read all those, you can grab a copy. Okay, that's all the consent agenda items. Would any of the Commissioners like to place any of those five items on a regular new business?
I think it'll make sense if we can, in the future, we used to read those numbers, this is our public number, but we used to read those numbers, and sometimes there's a lot of them, there's, I don't know, if you can team up on there today, those serial numbers of vehicles, it's easy to get tongue-tied, and reading them, it's easy to fall asleep while someone else is reading them, so there was an effort to just maybe not have to do that, but I think in the...
Number three is to appoint Faleen M. Fitzgerald to fill the unexpired term of Michael Sudan on the planning and zoning commission with a term ending December 31, 2019. Number four is to approve and authorize the chairman to execute the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Dallas for Pauline County to conduct the municipal election for the city of Dallas. Number five is to approve the no-cost change, the no-cost change order, number two, to the contract with Mid-South Builders Incorporated for the State Route 92 South Water Main relocation. So for those interested, the list of surplus items are available, are available in the back. So go to read all those and you can grab a copy. Okay, that's all the consent agenda items. Would any of the commissioners like to place any of those five items on a regular new business?
I think it'll make sense if we can, in the future. We used to read those numbers, this is our public number, but we used to read those numbers and sometimes there's a lot of them, there's, I don't know, if we could team up on there today, those serial numbers of vehicles. It's easy to get tongue-tied and reading them, and it's easy to fall asleep while someone else is reading them. So there was an effort to just maybe not have to do that, but I think in doing that, we inadvertently pulled that, it inadvertently got taken off the agenda that gets published to the website before every meeting. So could we just publish, publish that list when we publish the agenda to the website?
If you could not hear Rebecca, our clerk said it is on the website.
We have no old business, new business. Number one is to discuss action to approve a contract amendment with TETRA Tech for a detailed design, a sequence of construction per meeting, bidding and construction phase services for the copper mine WRF membrane expansion project in the amount of $908,000 in this hash warrants and help us out with several of these new business items.
Good morning. As we've previously discussed, the copper mine treatment plant is beyond its 80% utilization and it is continuing to grow, continuing to see increased flows. So in the fall of 2018, we entered into a contract with Tetra Tech for preliminary engineering of that expansion. And we've completed the preliminary engineering alternatives analysis and have previously provided that to you. This scope is the remaining engineering services for the expansion, including the detailed design taking us through bidding, construction administration, and through getting our asphalt at the end of the project. It includes the survey and the geotechnical work that's necessary to support it. The elements of the expansion, we think about when we're adding membranes, but it's not quite so clear-cut or simple. We're adding membranes, we have a bridge crane for maintenance of those membranes, chemical storage tanks and feed systems, disinfection of that additional flow. So a couple of meetings ago, we talked about UV lamps. We're going to need to add more UV capability in the system. Sledge holding tank, we're going to need another sledge holding tank to accommodate the additional residuals that will be produced by the process, and another centrifuge. In that alternatives analysis, we actually looked at, was it better to add equipment and continue to run on a day shift basis or to run the existing equipment longer hours over time? Now, our economic analysis showed that it was better at this point to add a centrifuge and that it would pay back in just a couple of years. Then, we also have the electrical and instrumentation systems to support the treatment process. I've got Lauren Springer with Tetra Tech and Russell Kelly, our treatment division manager, here with us this morning, if you have any questions. Regarding schedule, the design effort is about a six-month process, but we're talking about a 24-month process before we have capacity online. So that's why it's been a high priority to continue this process and push forward with the expansion of copper mine. I didn't mention, we have the permit for this. This is not something that the state will, we will submit drawings to the state for the expansion, but there's no modification in our discharge permit that will have to be on. And so, our recommendation is for this contract amendment for the membrane expansion project in the amount of $908,000. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them or turn to other folks to have them come up and answer them.
So this Springer is with Tetra Tech?
Yes.
How far did you have to come to that?
Only about 40 minutes.
Lauren, any questions? Here we go to number two, is to discuss action to approve the amendment. Number three, to the contract with Atkins North American Incorporated for the State Route 92 South Water Main relocation in the amount of $50,700. Lauren.
I'd like to just start by giving you just an overall project update on our utility relocation on 92. Overall, we're projecting that we're about $271,000 under our contracted amount for this project. We are, we have in that, in the item on your consent agenda today for Atkins, we are addressing both the, some additional line items as well as some additional time. We've all been talking about rain, but there were other associated, other impacts in coordination with road contractor that have impacted the schedule. This contract amendment with Atkins is an extension of our inspection services for an additional 50 days. We have a longer extension, but because of the management of staff resources, we have been able to see some savings on the original contract, but not enough to cover the full contract extension. So we're asking for an additional, additional 400 hours of inspection and 50 hours of construction management or office support for a total of $50,700.
Any questions? Number three is to discuss action to approve the amendment number one to the intergovernmental wastewater treatment agreement for the Sweetwater Creek Basin with Cobb County, Georgia.
Hopefully, it's coming up. In the, we have a couple of agreements with Cobb County for wastewater service in areas along the Cobb County-Pauline County line. And our Sweetwater Agreement generally serves an area of the southernmost part of the county, and it's through an interconnection along Pine Valley Road. We have a, we had a zoning and a proposed development in this area of, that's, the area in orange is generally bounded by Smith Road and Poplar Springs north of Mackland. And this is an area that would flow by gravity to Cobb County for wastewater treatment. We have in front of you this morning, amendment number one to our Sweetwater Creek Basin Agreement for service to this area. And it would be able to serve the R-55 community that is proposed along Mackland Road, and they would be constructing that outfall to reach Cobb County. The one thing that, there is a provision in this that any development that we would propose connecting under this agreement in this Powder Creek Basin, that we would submit that to Cobb County prior to approving. For them to evaluate their ability to serve it and to give us their concurrence with that. We don't have that provision on the southern end of the county because we have worked with Cobb prior to that agreement and in the initial stages of that agreement to ensure that that conveyance capacity exists. And in fact, we participated in the cost of that conveyance system in the south end.
Any questions? Well, I'll just make a comment. Lauren, I know this has been going on for a while, and I appreciate, I know you and your staff put a lot of effort into this. I also appreciate the folks over in Cobb County, I know they've got a lot going on. This is going to help things in that area. You look at the map and you're like, oh, it's a little rectangle that's going to be added to it, but it's so much more than what seems to be here. I know that, and I know you know that, but I just want to say, I appreciate that and appreciate the work of Cobb County and their cooperation in this area, look to serve people in this area, it's going to be a good thing.
Cobb County on board with this?
Cobb County is on board. I believe they will address this at their first meeting in May, following your approval.
Is this the area that will serve the senior living?
Yes, the active adult R-55 that was zoned last fall is on, is along Mackland here. And it will also, I believe they're also going to be providing access through their development to the church that has struggled so much for the last few years with their disposal system.
They are. The church, the folks at the church are really excited about it. They've been running on a dilapidated, septic system and have been, I think shortly after I was elected pastor, that church reached out to me and it asked about connecting the sewer and it just wasn't there and it wasn't feasible for the church to bring it here. So this is going to be a win-win for those in that area.
Cobb County, how do they, how do we pay sewage in the area?
We actually have a set of charge codes in our system, and it will be a monthly payment to Cobb. We'll actually pull those, pull the customers who are tributary of this in that charge code, total their usage, and then send that forward. And we have forms from Cobb for any connections in our area so that they know who's connected and that we transfer the appropriate taxes.
Any other questions? Thanks so much, Ms. Ashmore. We'll pass the time to our Pauline County DOT Director, George Jones. And number four is to discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into an agreement with Ethan Lineback Engineers Incorporated for the Engineering Services Master Agreement in the amount of $250,000 for a one-year period with the option to renew upon approval of additional funding. Services will be used for preliminary engineering or transportation SWAS projects. Mr. Jones?
Morning.
Morning.
Again, like you said, this is for on-call engineering services. Work includes project scoping, conceptual development, preliminary plans, final homes. We just don't have the staff right at this point to be able to handle all the requests of regular work and also progress for projects. So this is an effective way for us, the DOT, to move projects to launch.
Okay.
Using an on-call consultant is a good way to do this because they can also provide services that we don't have in-house. They have specialty areas such as bridges, things that we don't have, that type of expertise. So it's a good, it's good for us. Ethan Lineback has performed, you know, multiple areas of work for us over the years, and we've been very happy with their responsiveness and quality of work. This is our second renewal of services. This was first brought forward on the board in September 2016, and then again in December of 2017. This is our second renewal, and so we just ask that you approve the funding in the amount of $250,000 for this.
It's pay-as-you-go. If you don't use that much, you just pay for what you use.
Exactly. We're paying for the hours of services that we utilize.
Questions, comments? There you go. Number five is to discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into an agreement with Ethan Lineback Engineers Incorporated for the Engineering Services Master Agreement in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for a three-year period with the options to renew upon approval of additional funding. Services will be used for conceptual preliminary and final engineering of State Route 6, operational and safety improvement project along State Route 6 from Atlanta Highway SR 6 Business to Poplar Springs Road, Bill Creek Parkway.
A little background, the section of U.S. 278, more commonly known as State Route 6, is the most heavily traveled roadway in the county. About 38,000 vehicles per day in the section of roadway. There are no current plans that state has to buy the roadway. In an attempt to improve operation, we're wanting to work with a consultant to look at potential solutions, provide progression, reduce delays, increase safety on the roadway. We're working in partnership with the city of Hiram and the Georgia Department of Transportation on this project. In our SWAS program, we have proposed to set aside $4.3 million for potential improvements along the section of corridor. Our first part of our project is basically collect data, look at the existing conditions, evaluate, and identify potential project solutions to go forward with. You know, we're going to investigate such strategies as access managers and traffic signal modifications, removing traffic signals, interpartial access, intersection reconfigurations. There's a whole lot of things that are out there, we just got to kind of look at what we think is going to work and also basically model it and see what we can come up with as the best solutions to go forward with that. You know, projects will be divided into short-term, mid-term, and long-term based on the complexity, time, and the amount of money involved for each type of project. We're looking to develop and construct projects, looking to improve the traffic flow and conditions on the corridor. It would be easy if we had unlimited funds and we could just buy the roadway. Unfortunately, we don't have that. So basically, we're trying to take what funds we do have and use those funds in the best way possible to improve the conditions on that corridor. I know it's partly in post-one and post-three, so this is the busiest road in the county. And I think what we can do out there and what potential improvements we can construct will be a huge benefit to most folks in this county. I'm not going to answer any questions, hopefully they have on the project.
George, is the case where you don't have to bid it out?
No, sir. We actually, we put out a request for proposals last fall, five different firms actually submitted requests. We interviewed three of those firms and those three firms. We dotted down to the team of Ethan Lineback in our case as the firm that best understood what we were going for with this project and felt that they could give us the best project, the best engineering services.
Questions, comments? Thank you, sir. New business number six is to discuss action to approve the increase in the Material Testing and Special Inspection Service Agreement with NOVA in the amount of $97,981.86 for the Pauline County Adult Attention Law Enforcement Center. Mr. Green and Ms. Kisekachak.
Thanks. I just wanted to introduce this for a minute and then let Amy take over. You just met Amy with our update. Just want to say that quality control is extremely important on a project of this size. It's important on any project, but this project has a huge magnitude and implications. If we had quality problems or a breakdown, we're going to have to live with it for a long time. So it's really important that we get the proper testing and inspection. We're using NOVA Engineering and Environmental. They are an independent firm checking the quality of the materials on the project and the contractor's performance, and they generate reports for us almost daily on this project. And that quantity varies on different projects and different conditions. Amy can speak on that just a little bit more. In my view, testing is very good money spent to make sure that we're going to have an excellent building when we're done that will serve us in many decades in the future. I'd be glad to answer any questions after any of this time. Thank you.
So this request is to increase NOVA's contract amount by $97,981.86. The overages that we're seeing right now is basically due to a few big-ticket items. One was the unforeseen rock that we dealt with for a few months. They had to be out here on a daily basis while the blasting and the quantification of the rock was happening. I think that was $33,000 of that over cost that we're seeing. A couple other items that were not foreseen. A couple of other items that were not foreseen were erosion testing and retests, which were ultimately caused by the, the increase in rain events that we've seen since the beginning of the project. Another one is the visitor's center upgrade. So they've actually had to do a lot more testing. They've had to really work with the contractor to come up with some recommendations on which way we should go as far as foundations and locations of the building. And then one line item that was not included in the original special inspections was floor flatness that we're also having them check throughout the project.
Very much, Amy.
Thank you.
Scott? That's the conclusion of regular business today. We do have a planning and zoning meeting scheduled for 2:00 this afternoon. We have no one who's signed up for non-attend items today and we have no requirement for executive session. So this time, I'll entertain a motion that will be adjourned.
I'll move in there.
And Mr. Davis, read that motion as your second. Second, like Mr. Stover. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And adjourn the jury.